This started with Tracy. And we were talking and Tracy had concern that it might be a good idea if we talked about this very important subject in another very thorough study session environment, maybe a retreat environment, that sort of thing. So we put together something like a hybrid of that. And really, she was asking us to review the facts and the details leading to that'll help you all to make this decision that's coming. And that's our goal today, is to provide that information for you. As we prepared, we were asking ourselves a variety of questions, which kind of led us into some new areas that we hadn't yet discussed, and so we're going to share those with you today as we work our way through this. The example is that one of the things that we've been doing is relying on our rate model, which is a, which really, we have a consultant come in, they tell us what the rate should be, and so we plugged that in. The last time we did it was in 2010. And there were some things in it that, to me, didn't make sense until we worked last night in order and finally got through it, and I think it makes sense now. And so, and we're going to talk about that later. So that's an example of another thing. Another thing that we talked about was actually a fairly simple example, which the rate model is a little bit more complex, but the simple thing was actually Angleside. And when we plumbed the details on that, some information I think is available that we hadn't discussed of an analytical, you know, just on a common sense standpoint, that I think makes sense now that we've, now that we've been able to do that. There is obviously lots of interest in this, and Vicky suggested that we meet in here so we could televise it and create a record of the presentation and your discussion and the interaction. And I think that will help the public because of their interest in it as well. In terms of the process, it's our, there's three presenters. I'm going to start, and then Greg or Mike are going to pick up the second, the second and third portion of it. And we've also invited our consultant to be here in case there are questions that we can't answer about the Upper Mountain View project. And if we don't have an answer to questions that you asked today, we'll get back to you. We'll go find it. It's our intention to, we're going to, we've got a presentation program, but it's not our intention to do a presentation and then just, you guys wait till we're done. What we want to do is have an interaction. So anytime during the course of this thing, if you want to make a comment, or if you have a question, we're going to be deliberately flexible today in terms of working on it. The goal again is to get the information available for you. The order of things, we're going to start by talking about Angleside. But Angleside's a little bit, there's a couple reasons for that. Number one, it's a little simpler, and there's some elements within the Angleside discussion that I think are going to be helpful, just in terms of understanding water systems and how our water system works in general. But then there's also some elements within that portion of it that are, because Angleside fits into the system, that'll also tell us a little bit more about the system as well. Then we're going to talk about Upper Mountain View, and then we're going to talk about finances. And then, well, actually, it may not even all be in that order because it's kind of mixed together for purposes of trying to create clarity. So let's go to our first and second slide.
Do you want to go to the system app just to give them an orientation?
I do, but there's a slide in here that takes us to that.
Okay. Also, just real quick, in addition to our consultant, we have a representative from Department of Commerce now, correct Dan? To help with any of the funding questions that may come out of the discussion as well.
Good, thank you.
Okay. So Terry, can we get the PowerPoint loaded up? There we go. So again, this is speaking generally about the Angleside system. What's the problem? But again, there's generalities in here that'll be useful later. Group A, it talks about group A system, that's what we have, and a group A system is generally the kind of system we have and cities have in general. And we don't really have a choice in terms of what kind of system we have. The state calls this a group A system, and that's, and then we have to stand by those standards. And there's really, yeah, and the idea that we're dealing with here, we don't have any issues with water quality, we have issues with volume. And you've got to have enough volume to put out a fire, and you've got to have enough volume to keep providing water if the tank is cut off from the source of water. So the source is important, and the tank is important. In fact, the whole system is, but what you're trying to do is if you can't get water from your well or from some other system that's in place between the well and the tank, then you've got to have enough volume to last you for a couple of days. And the fire regulations say you've got to have 1,500 gallons a minute for two hours. So that means if you get cut off from the source, you've got to be able to put water on a fire at 1,500 gallons per minute for a couple hours in that system. And you've got to maintain at least 20 pounds per square inch while you do it. Those kind of make sense, and we're going to get into that a little bit in a little bit. Also, the standby regulations, which is your, you know, being able to maintain water supply, it means you've got to have two days of water supply for your area, and that's essentially 200 gallons of supply per equivalent residential unit. So a house needs to have 200 gallons a day for that house in order, and also, in that case also, you have to maintain at least 20 pounds per square inch. And right now, we don't meet these standards in Angleside. In fact, we really don't meet those standards in the rest of the system. So what this is about in large measure is to fix, is to bring it up to that standard. So, and, but the interesting thing about Angleside is it's existing system where we're fixing something, and the deal with the Upper Mountain View pressure zone is that it is, it's a whole new system. So we're not just fixing something, we're actually designing it from scratch, and we have to do it in the context of our whole system. I want to talk about risk, because that's really what you're talking about here. When you talk about volume, and, you know, and in terms of losing the water in the tank, what are some things that could happen, that could cause that to happen? Well, you could have a power outage, for instance. So you have backup systems to keep that going, but maybe those, you know, and maybe those fail before you can get other things fixed. You have component or other equipment failure besides your backup power or your, so a piece of equipment fails, a pipe breaks, a pump breaks down, you know, something of that nature. You could have a natural disaster, and I mean, there's a particular risk as it relates to Angleside, which is a natural disaster. You could have sabotage. And I think that the chances, and you could have, and then who knows what other things could happen? I mean, this is a complex system, and things can break down. So what are we risking? Well, we're risking that we don't have enough water to put out a fire, and we don't have enough water for people until we can get the system fixed and start putting water back in the tank. And, you know, how much risk do you have? Well, actually, it's pretty low. I'd call it a very low risk, and that's on purpose, because this is water. And it's, and so you have a very low risk, but if you can't meet these standards, and if you do have a failure and you can't meet the risk, then it's a really bad thing for Shelton, or any city that can't put water into people's homes and into the system. So it's deliberately designed in order to minimize the risk. So I want to give you that. I mean, we've spent a lot of times talking about regulations, but those are kind of the reasons behind the regulations. So we're not, I get frustrated, I get frustrated with regulations, really frustrated. I get frustrated with unfunded mandates. On the other hand, I think it's important to step back and say, okay, yeah, we get frustrated with it, but what's the reason behind it? And then you make your own choice about what you feel about it. But anyway, that's what it is. In our case, we've got, we've got a lot of them, and I'm not going to go through these in any depth, I'm not even going to try, but I just wanted to put them up and say that there's a lot of regulatory context, including our own. Because we've created, we've created our own water system plans, city comprehensive plan, those sorts of things that establish standards. And what we're doing here is trying to meet all of them. I want to talk about water service areas, and these two principles, although we're talking, focusing on Angleside at the point, these two issues really encompass the whole system. And all the water comes from wells near Shelton Springs, which isn't necessarily a good thing. I mean, if you get a contamination in that area, then you're out of water. You know, then your source dries up and you've got a problem. So I'm going to talk about that a little bit as it relates to Angleside as we go. And again, back to a point I made earlier, if the water's cut off from the source of your supply to the tank, and the tank's got to provide fire flow and standby water until you can get it back. So those are the, those are the two general principles, and now let's talk about the Angleside in particular.
Dave? Yeah? On the Angleside, now the supply line for that crosses Goldsboro, right?
Yeah, there's two of them. I've got a diagram that's coming.
And so that's how it's fed, and it's a gravity feed to the customers?
Yes, out of the tank.
From that tank.
Yes.
As we talk about risks, and I've heard it talked about a couple times, earthquakes. If you lose a line, wouldn't the tank drain itself? And how do you stop that? And are we planning around that for all this?
Is there a check valve in that? There isn't a check valve in that, but that is one of the operational emergency procedure plans, is those types of activities, that's one of the first things that they're looking for and accounting for by shut, manually shutting off valves.
So you have to go to the tank itself?
Not to the tank. There's actually some valves closer to downtown that we can access quickly to protect the tank from draining back. The pressure sustaining station, the booster pump station, it will also have some automatic controls in it that will be able to supplement that current emergency procedure process with, and probably ultimately be able to automate from either the SCADA itself, where the crews could manually in the computer do it, or potentially even under a sensor type, hey, we're losing pressure in this, service main, shut it off.
So that would all take place with the booster station, not now?
Not now.
So now they have to manually?
Right now, it's all a manual situation right now.
The supply line's going to the top of the tank too?
No, in this case, it actually bottomed.
Does it?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's talk about the system itself. If you look at that center map there, those are, those are the four or five pressure zones, four pressure zones that we currently have. Those are all based on elevations, and because they gravity feed, to the extent that you get one elevation that's a lot higher than another, you create really high pressures in the lower areas, and then if you had, if you had just one pressure zone everywhere, the pressure would be really high in the downtown and really low up on top of Alpine Heights, for instance, or up in Angleside, because it's 300-foot difference in the elevation. So the idea is that you need to set up separate zones so that you can set up a, so that each zone has its own pressure area. Wrong one, Terry. It's the, that's the. Let the other people can see.
That, there you go.
That's the one. Okay. So it, you know, you have the blue and the purple and the green and the yellow, or those are the existing pressure zones. And then, and you'll see later what we're attempting to do with the Upper Mountain View zone. It's a map that's kind of hidden there on the left behind that one that you'll be able to, we'll show you how we're trying to do that. And it's a little flexible at this point, too. It's still subject to some design issues. The Angleside zone is the green one at the bottom of the screen. Okay, let's get to the next, let's go back to the PowerPoint, Terry. Okay. Okay, now this is a kind of a, this is a graphic that I made up. You don't want to credit an engineer with having done this, but I think it makes the point. You really have, in very simple terms, which this is, this is the way the pipes are laid out on the systems. Off on the right side is, the first thing that you see there is the well, and the water comes up out of the well, and then it goes to the high school tank, which is just up above the library. The other, then it goes to the bottom of the hill down in the valley, where we have a pumping station down there. And then it pumps it up to the Angleside tank. Now, there's about 150 feet of elevation difference between the high school tank and the bottom of the valley, and there's about 300 feet of elevation between the bottom of the valley, maybe a little less, and the bottom of the Angleside tank. And you're pushing to the top of it. So you're pushing 350 feet thereabouts, or a little more, by the time you build up pressure. So there's an enormous amount of pressure in that pumping station. The idea is that, you know, you think, well, and everybody's thought, well, we have a, you know, what, everybody worries, well, if the pumps go down, we're going to have a problem if there's a line break. But actually, it's a bigger issue than that, because the whole thing is your supply, your source supply, to the Angleside tank. So that if you have a problem with the line, if you have a problem with the well, that's a problem for everybody, but it's also a problem for Angleside. If you have a problem with the high school tank, again, then you have a problem in that downtown pressure zone. If you have a problem with the pumper stations, you have a problem for the others, for two lines that are going up there. So you, so every, every component up until you get to the Angleside tank is a source, and every one has its own potential for trouble. So a break in any portion will interrupt service to Angleside. So let's look at what happens if you get it. The Angleside tank, keep in mind, remember one of the, one of the standards is you have to maintain 20 pounds of pressure. And the Angleside tank drains out, you have to fill it up in order to be able to get adequate pressure. In fact, you have to fill it up beyond 69%. And as soon as it goes, as soon as it goes down into below 31, the top 31%, then the pressure stops dropping in portions of the Angleside neighborhood below standards. So what? You know, well, you've just got low pressure. All water systems leak, and our systems do, every water system has leaks in it. It's not a desirable thing, and we do a lot of work into minimizing the leaks. In fact, we've done some remarkable progress and some, we've had some really good efforts in that in recent years, but it, but it, but they still leak, and they, you know, and it's a constant problem. So what happens is you get groundwater in a lot of places, even up on top of the hill. I mean, we've had Meridian Heights, for instance, has groundwater in it, and it's up on top of the hill. And so you have water lines, in many cases, that are surrounded by groundwater. And if the pressure in the line drops below that of the groundwater, instead of the, instead of the lines, the water line leaking out, you get groundwater leaking in, which can give you contamination. So that's, that's one of the reasons that you want to maintain at least a 20 pounds, so that you don't have a risk of that happening. So, and the lower the tank gets, the more risk you have of groundwater contamination coming in. You also have issues from, you know, we work to try to prevent people from leaving hoses in, you know, contaminated water, for instance. And then though, when you lose water, then there's water in the house that pushes it back the other way, and there's things like that, it can happen, it can siphon out of things. And so the reason you maintain pressure is so you don't pick up those contaminants. And the lower it goes, the more areas are affected, as, because it's hilly, and also the lower it goes, the more chance you have of picking up those things. So what are the solutions? You can have a, you know, you can add a third pump, and these are solutions that we've heard. We're not making these up. This is solutions that people have said. You can add a third pump on the valley floor, and it actually helps some of the problems. But remember, the pumps is not the only component that you, that has a potential of failure risk, that you've got a risk of failure. You've got all these other components as well. So it gives you redundancy if you have a pump failure, but it doesn't have redundancy if a flood comes through and takes out your two lines going up the hill. And then you're down to basically 16 hours of water instead of 48 hours. By the way, the reason you want the two days is so you have time to fix what's wrong so you can get the water back into the tank. Back up, put it back up, Terry. Sorry, the other, the other thing you want is a, you want to develop, another one is to develop another well in the Angleside neighborhood. And yeah, absolutely, we need another well in the Angleside neighborhood, and in fact, it's in our long-term plan. Remember I said earlier that having all your wells in one place is like having all your eggs in one basket? To the extent that you can spread it out and put wells in other places, that mitigates your risk. If you, if you lose, if these wells get a contamination, you can get wells from someplace else. But even if you put in another well, that doesn't, that doesn't resolve your issue, that doesn't resolve this issue. It doesn't resolve the dead storage issue, because all you're doing out of the well is you're pushing water out of the well into the tank, and you've still got this issue. So it doesn't solve the problem that you're dealing with here, which is standby supply. So then the third issue is the one that we, that we're recommending and I'm recommending. And it's the, it's build a pressure station to allow the use of the entire volume. Now, that's going to sit there and do nothing a lot of the time. And, but when you need it, you're really going to need it, so.
And the only time you'd need it is in a, basically a catastrophe?
Yeah, a failure.
A failure.
Yeah.
Or potentially a fire situation. That's one of the bigger, bigger issues that Dave was talking about, sources and storage kind of interchanged. And that's appropriate discussion when we're talking about the standby, the enough water to serve our customers. In that calculation, we're allowed to account for those sources, minus the biggest one we have to the system. And say, okay, this can put in this much water, we've got to store the differential down to a mandatory minimum, and that's where we get to the 200 gallons per ERU. We're, we're at that mandatory minimum for domestic storage. The fire storage is slightly different. When we talk about the fire storage quantity, we have to pretend that the tank is totally isolated, for whatever reason. A power outage, a line rupture, whatever. And we have to store that basic minimum volume for the 1,500 gallons for two hours to fight a fire in that event. Power outage is, in this example, is a great scenario for that. We've seen sustained power outages downtown. If in that course of that, we had a generator failure at the pump station and a large fire, it's conceivable that we could use that top small usable piece of the Angleside tank in fairly short order. We're about 25% short on our fire storage. Does that sound about right, Chris?
It does, yes.
So that volume we're supposed to have ready to use from a gravity source out of the tank, we only have about 75% of that in that Angleside zone right now.
So it would only occur, like you're saying, if you had a generator failure and a pump failure at the same time. Otherwise, if you're not relying on the generator, you're able, you've got a second pump there, possibly a third, that you could, you could use, instead of storage, you'd have pressure.
But again, the regulations don't allow us to look at it that way. We have to assume that that source is completely offline when we're talking about the fireside of it. When we're talking about domestic, then your scenario is absolutely right. We can take, we take all of our sources that supply the area, we figure out which one's the largest, we turn it off, and then make our calculation from there. On fire, we say we have no sourcing available at all, we just have to have water that we can drain out of a tank.
And without the booster pump at the, at the storage tank, as you would draw that tank down in a fire situation, your pressures would become very, very low in the surrounding community without that booster pump to maintain adequate pressure. So you're going to have the threat of contamination in a real high fashion if a major fire were to happen in the Angleside area.
Does the adding of the chlorine to the water system, does that help on the contamination part? Isn't that what we did, kind of, so?
Yes.
That does help?
It does help, yes.
And in, in our conversation, again, about these three options that are before us, in option number two, does that help at all with any storage capacity?
Yes.
It does help a little?
We'll get to that a little bit more in Greg and my part of the presentation, but yeah, absolutely. Options two and three, the assumption is Angleside is part of both of those packages, and we're talking about the flexibility in Upper Mountain View.
All right, thank you. Dave said we could jump in anytime we wanted.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. The, I will, just to add a little more value to that comment on the, for the fire. Based on our experience out at, on the Shelton Springs, when we had the fire trucks come up and they were, and we really didn't have any water coming from anyplace else, they were sucking, and they were sucking the line. So I mean, they were actually creating a negative pressure in the things. And those trucks, when they're pulling water, they can really pull hard. And so they, if you have any leaks, they're going to suck water into them.
That's kind of like government sucking the money out of the raker's pocket sometimes.
I know.
Maybe.
We, I think that's for you to decide, your honor.
Yeah, we're working on that one right now.
So Dave, I have a question about that. So in that case where the water was being sucked out of the lines into the fire hydrants, into the fire trucks, does that damage, like, the residential lines or the existing lines? I mean, does it create problems with the lines that go into the houses?
I wouldn't expect that to be the case. If you've got an extreme vacuum, yeah, obviously. Any pipeline, when it goes under a vacuum, has the potential to collapse, depending on the condition of it. Generally speaking, in most systems, no. Really, the problem comes, as Dave said, where you always have some little bits of leaks here and there. You have connections within the homes that potentially allow things to be pulled back into the system, and that's where the greatest risk comes from.
There's a slight risk with hot water tanks.
And I think Chris wants to chime in a little bit on this piece of it, too.
Yeah, I'm Chris Hoover, I'm the design engineer on the Upper Mountain View improvements. The way that it's been described to me is water system is really a living thing, like a human body. When you bleed, blood typically comes out for a reason, so pathogens cannot get into your system. Water systems imagine it the same way. When you get down below that 20 PSI, pathogens then can enter the system, and the drinking water system is a biological system, tiny bit of chlorine in the system keeps it disinfected. But when that pressure drops, it's like the human body, the blood pressure goes down, that's the opportunity for infection to come in. And that's the way I've always envisioned it. My father was a doctor, he talks about that, so we've had it that back and forth. And that's the way I look at it. That 20 PSI is really that critical point at which the water's always flowing out, and the pathogens that are out there, through leaks cannot get back in. That's why you want to maintain that 20 PSI.
Terry, are you getting voices? Are you getting the audio from that? Okay, good.
All right, you got to continue on there?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we're done with Angleside. Unless you have more questions, but I think we're ready to move on to Mountain View. We are? Okay. So I'm in, stop. Okay. Well, I guess I'll, I'll take over the microphone here and move through Upper Mountain View. Just real, real quick here, as we just look at this map, and then maybe we can set it down, but see if I can get the right, right button. Here's our Mountain View pressure zone, up here. And Upper Mountain View is going to be the northerly portion of it.
That map's a little out of date, but basically, we're showing the UGA, and really, this white portion is currently part of the Upper Mountain View. The top of this map is essentially our UGA boundary. So the yellow plus this upperly, upper white is our current Mountain View zone, and you'll see how that relates to this map later on. Basically, the pieces we're talking about here are going to be this white portion up here.
Okay. So Terry, can I get the slideshow back up on there? So, when we sat down, Dave and all of us, trying to think of how to best talk about the problems ahead of us, I guess, what we're trying to, to, to solve, we thought, well, let's list the problems, the key problems that, that exist, and, and kind of why we want to go down this list and solve as many of these as we can. So this list is in a, in a prioritized fashion. I mean, some of these things, but probably the, the key thing, number one, is our insufficient storage. Now, we just talked about Angle Side having insufficient storage, but our, our Upper Mountain View, it doesn't have adequate storage now at all. We don't have enough storage up there and, and a tank, really, to provide the water pressures necessary to, to energize that new line we built last summer. The Dayton Airport Road line that goes out to the State Patrol. And so, we actually tried to...
Let me, let me, just one quick second, because I was under the impression that option one, two, or three, that if we chose any of those options, that we could meet that obligation.
Well, what would happen, Mayor, is if we chose option one, which would be not taking advantage of any of the money that Department of Health is offering us, we would have to take the money from the Angle Side station and move that to build enough of the Upper Mountain View system to provide pressures to the State Patrol.
So minimum, that is a possibility.
That is a possibility. Yeah, let me explain, because I think it's helpful to know what we're trying to do in this exercise. We're, we're trying to determine if we did nothing, where do we stand right now? So we, so we started with, at ground zero, we build nothing, we're not going to build anything, what are the problems that exist in the here and now? Why would we do anything? And so that was the basis. So we're kind of starting at ground zero, as, as what we have now. We've already, we've already kind of, we've already kind of got an indication from you that, you know, we're off option one, we're on to option two. So I think some of these are going to be resolved, assuming that those are the choices that you make.
Yeah. So option two does provide water to that line that we built?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But you were correct, Mayor, in, in our original presentations, all three, to some level or another, would provide service to State Patrol. That was our number-one goal in all of this.
Thank you.
Yeah. Actually, the next slide will get into this, this bubble chart over here, and we'll actually go through the different pieces of, of each of those projects. The upper one being option two, and the bottom one being option three. But back to the problems here, to just kind of touch base on all of those. Our commitment to the State Patrol, certainly, we want to achieve that. And then, you know, insufficient system operations, flexibility, and reliability. And this goes back to solving a lot of the risk-related stuff that is out there that could happen, that gives us redundancy and the ability to, to close valves and to move water through different pipes to, to pressurize or to, to provide flow to different areas or different zones, between zones. This, this is something that, you know, by building this Upper Mountain View will give us some flexibility up there. Certainly, growth and development. We've, we've spent a ton of money getting our treatment plants up to speed to allow now for growth and development to happen within Shelton. And, and these four main development locations, obviously Shelton Hills is at our doorstep, they want to move forward, and we certainly want to provide to them. There's some large subdivisions like Peacock Ridge that I'm sure if the economy gets going, we'll start seeing more of those submitted for review and, and the growth. We have the industrial area, we've got John's Prairie area, and possibly, you know, other locations around town that we, we certainly don't want to inhibit growth to, to be able to happen. So the farther we move and, and build things, the, the more opportunity we're going to have to facilitate that growth. Number five, of course, public safety and risk. You know, we, we definitely don't want to have any boil water orders, and, and the system flexibility, redundancy, and reliability is all part of that. So getting into number six, the costs. As we have this opportunity with both the grant and loan, and how much of the loan we want to take advantage of, the farther we can go down that, the, the future, the future, we don't know what it holds. So, you know, the availability of funding in the future, the more we build now, the less we have to worry about building in the future. And when we build it now, it's, it's usable from this point forward. We can take advantage of it. Any delays in construction, if, you know, I like under option two, and we'll get into the specifics there, but we're pushing about $9 million worth of work out into the future. If we were to build that in, in the year 2025, and we're probably looking at a 4% inflation rate on construction costs, and, and that's cumulative, so it, it drives the cost from, from what we could build now around the $5 million mark, is all of a sudden up to about $9 million in, in 2025. Future loans, you know, what we've seen, the trends of the industry, low, either pure grant money, or the whole thing is 100%, we're seeing more and more a combination loan like, like this one, where we have $2.1 million of grant available to us, but it's also, for dollar for dollar, has to be matched with a loan amount. So that's where this, this option two kind of comes up, is that we're taking full advantage of the grant, which is $2.1 million, we're going to have to put $2.1 million of loan money with that to, to come out with our, our option two being $4.2 million worth of, of the effort. And, I don't know, just as we look towards the future, interest rates probably are going to be more at the bond level, like this one we have now for our sewer system. It's a, it's a $1.8 million grant for Basin Three, and, and it comes with a loan opportunity, but that loan is for a 2.3% interest. So, and that's even under a hardship case for that. So let's, let's turn the slide, we'll, we'll look at these bubbles, and Mike, I believe you're going to kind of walk us through this.
I'm going to take over here for this for a little bit. So, kind of a little bit of step back into history, kind of how we got to where we're at. You know, we did the comp plan update back in 2008, '09, and '10. And really, the comp plan told us that, over here in the area where State Patrol's at, we need to increase the pressures to be able to effectively serve, serve them. About 2011, we did a small effort with Brown and Caldwell to kind of look at what's first step, coming from 100,000-foot to 50,000-foot level of view, what's the best way to do that pressure increase? And that's where we came up with the concept of the Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone. Subsequent to that, we've started that process, and we've gone through some design iterations, including last fall, we actually took a little time out with the consultant and said, we know it's a new pressure zone, we've got some really good concepts on how to do that, but let's take a look at the most cost-effective, least-waste way to do this in an incremental process to get us from minimum goal of supplying State Patrol to our ultimate goal of creating this new Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone, which in this map we've shown is Areas One and Area Two here. And again, that's this upper white portion of the existing Mountain View zone, as we saw it in the main, uh, main map here. So we did that effort, and we came up with basically three groups of, of improvements. And a key, key component here, critical component, is each of these groups is a complete project. And if we don't do everything within the groups, and I'll caveat that in a minute, but if we don't complete this group, it, none of the pieces we do finish work. Same thing when we get to this group. If we don't complete all of the pieces, they don't work as a system, and we don't get the benefit out of them. So the caveat would be, in a recent development here, original concept was one large tank, and due to some construction issues, as well as some long-term maintenance reliability issues, we've actually split that into two smaller tanks. So we do now have an option here in this group of work to set aside one of the two smaller tanks for later construction, if we really needed to. But again, we have to complete the bubbles as we move through this process.
Mike, didn't we say yesterday that we could conceivably also, under option two, distinguish Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone from the other things as well?
We, we could, we could...
It could conceivably be in its own bubble, but...
The option one discussion that we talked about, yeah, there are a couple other things that we could leave out if we really had to. The problem would be, we actually create more deficiencies in the system as a whole by doing that. Yes, option one, for even less than this, we could provide service to State Patrol, but we're going to make other problems for ourselves. Highly not recommended. Minimum recommendation is going to be this option two procedure here. So going over to our system map, kind of discussing how this looks. So you can see Area One here, we've got this varying shading in it, and, and we did that purposely. Because really, what we're showing here with the shading and this flexible boundary between Areas One and Two is the range of possibility of benefit that we see as we go from option two to option three. So basically, with option two, our benefits are focused over here in the darker area. We have less potential for growth in the Shelton Hills area, and over in the easterly portion of Area One. As we get into the group of, a group of improvements in option three, then we clearly get into our future needs in the Shelton Hills area, and we start extending this ability to serve further and further into Area Two, which finally is given service by this last little piece of work over here, that really just makes a final connection to the John's Prairie system. This is our least-expensive piece of work, it's probably the least critical to do, we have a, a lot of flexibility in when we do that, and we lose flexibility in when it needs to be done, as we move back around the bubble chart this direction. So that's where we're at, and a question that we've heard...
I, I hear a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, in option two, you don't address as much of the Area Two, where the growth is going to occur, John's Prairie, and possibly Peacock Ridge?
In Area, in option two, we would theoretically probably not address any of Area Two. We would actually likely make Area One smaller. Because we do know that over time, Shelton Hills, their preliminary water system modeling shows that with some limited restrictions, they can develop essentially the two big-box pads in that general vicinity under the existing Mountain View zone. Once they get much beyond that, and particularly once they get up into the residential in the western end, they've got to be on the upper zone at that point.
So along with that, and, and Peacock Ridge, if, say, we only did option two, and those came online all of a sudden, then, then we wouldn't be able to service them with current, what we have currently. We would have to go back and fund them another time in the future in order to take advantage of them.
Absolutely. We would probably be able to serve a little bit of the very early, but those developments as a whole, as we've seen them presented to us, you're absolutely right. We could not fully serve those developments under option two. Under option three, we're pretty dang close, and probably can do it. There may be some minor, some of the additional CIP stuff that we've pushed off of the, off of the timeline later into the 20 years that's still not accounted for. Small things like the spring reinstatement, some things like that. We may need to do those, and we, we're, we're assuming we have to do those over time anyhow, but we're focusing on the most critical pieces, which is these components around well three and four, and the new storage to serve and establish the new Upper Mountain View zone.
Yeah, along this line, not changing subjects, but, you know, I remember, I don't know, 10, 12 years ago, when we were anticipating seven new home developments coming into Shelton. The economy was running really fast, and I remember the, the newspaper articles about comparing for that future. It never happened. Nothing happened, and we've been kind of dead for a long time. We were hoping things get going real soon. So it's a catch-22. We have to be a little careful in, in saying, okay, when, we don't have anything that's guaranteed for our commercial residential future. We're hoping it happens soon. We need the money, we need the growth. So there's just a little, little caution here. At one point, we thought it was all happening the next week, and then nothing happened. We may be in exactly that same situation right here. And with the Shelton Hills experience, the residential is probably 10 or 15, maybe five, 10, 15, 20 years out on that need also. So there's a balance in this.
Absolutely, Mayor. But also remember that in these pieces here, we had two primary goals. How can we incrementally get from serve State Patrol to ultimately serve all of this, including future growth? But we also have embedded in the components here, how do we fix the problems we have right now? And we have storage problems in this area anyhow. And so what we've looked at here is a set of stor-, the storage, again, storage being our most critical piece, that most cost-effectively, as we incrementally do these bubbles, gets us through that, and includes the fix what we have a problem with right now. Again, option two, not our recommendation based on some of the funding issues, but definitely a viable option to get us to kind of the immediate needs, immediate goals. Option three, in our opinion, and we'll get to that a little bit later, really is what we believe is the best, given the long-term health and benefit to the community and the water system as a whole.
All right. Let me just, a couple more things before we leave this particular location. Again, option two includes and completes the Angle Side project. So we basically can use the bond money that we currently acquired last year to complete Angle Side, and we can move all the money that Department of Health, this 4.2 million in, in option two, can be used to, to complete this. And this would include at least one tank out towards the Mason County Public Works Site that, that serves, and, and like Mike said, up here, this darker area is going to provide the pressure for all the development that would happen along that, that line we built last year out to the State Patrol. And, and, and we're starting to see people, in fact, we had a Baptist church come in the other day along that line that wanted to use some of it, and of course, we're, we're trying to figure out a way to maybe hook them up, but most of that line does not have adequate storage to, to allow growth to happen in that, in that area. So that, that is the case. And like Mike said, option three includes a huge piece, being this groundwater tank reservoir, not a tank, groundwater reservoir, uh...
No, tank is right. Ground tank.
Ground tank, there you go.
Ground-level tank.
That happens right here at well one, that, that is, is going to really provide us that storage functionality to, to allow for growth and, and that to happen. So let's, let's push forward here. We're going to get into some of the funding-related discussions, and I think this will hopefully bring some clarity as to the choices before you. Yeah. Crazy thing, it keeps wanting to be like a retractable thing. Going to the next slide here, funding overview. So some of the key assumptions, and there's, there's a sheet here that we're eventually going to get to, but this, this kind of colorful sheet before you, at the top of there, we handed this one out in January, and, and it has some of these key assumptions that overarching whatever option we pick, that are really important to kind of just discuss, because it sets the stage, so to speak, on why we maybe want to, to go in different directions. Everything in our comp plan, in our water system plan that was adopted back in, in 2010, needs to be built within the 20-year window. So we have all of this kind of queue of, of capital improvement work that needs to happen, and, and that needs to happen whether you do an option two or option three, it's just when you do it. So when, when, when we, I'll look at the spreadsheet in detail with you here in a second, but everything needs to be built under, under either option. Our growth rate, as the model has been used to calculate, we figured 1% annually... Our growth rate, as the model has been used to calculate, we figured 1% annually as Shelton's growth rate. I mean, it could be more, it could be less, but that seemed like the amount that was reasonable to put in there. We assume the construction costs would, basically, if you delayed construction, you're going to have about a 4% construction interest rate, and we took that off of, what was it, Engineering News?
Engineering News reports, it's a national publication that produces an index similar to the CPI. It's called the Construction Cost Index. It's used nationwide for estimating tools for construction, and it's specific to the construction industry. In the case for our region, I did, got the data and did a 20-year analysis, and to be honest, the long-term increase is slightly less than this 4%, but it's a very sawtoothed climbing profile, and the steeper portions are running anywhere between 6% and 10% with the short duration either leveling offer, in a couple of cases slightly reducing, and then we go back to the steep climb. So, a little bit more than the average seemed prudent to account for us being in one of the longer climbing periods, and potentially being in a steep portion of it, as we move forward.
Greg, on the growth rate, does that include the areas in the urban growth area for development that's happening now and projected to happen outside that we'll be using our water system?
Well, this growth rate, I don't think was necessarily targeted in any specific area, but just kind of all of the Shelton area, including our urban growth area and the potential ahead of us. We don't know how fast it's going to go, but 1% of our, you know, population annually would seem to be about where we'd be, so...
I don't think, I don't think we know that.
Yeah, we really...
Yeah, I think we need to, that's in the comp plan, and we just need to, we need to refer back to that.
And actually, I can't answer that. Generally speaking, the growth was focused in the mountain view, upper mountain view area. There's some limited growth in the other zones, but the comp plan did account for the majority of the growth being in those two northerly zones. Or, the north zone, mountain view at the time, and whatever came out of the, how do we serve State Patrol, essentially, so...
Terry, if I can get this, there we go, perfect, thank you. So, number four, just kind of an overall trend, is that, you know, the earlier we build these capital improvements, they improve our safety and reduce our risk as soon as they're completed. So, that's a good thing for that reason, to build them sooner than later. And I'm not going to go down the list of those, but, you know, they're right there that we've talked about already. And then certainly being ready to receive and embrace growth and development here in Shelton. So, kind of a couple other things, just I have in my Crip notes here, that, you know, the earlier in the timeframe we build things, the more predictable things are. I mean, we can't look too far into the crystal ball, because we all don't have a clue what's actually coming at us, but, you know, we hope things are going to move forward here, we're going to start seeing growth, we're coming out of the economy, kind of recession here, and hopefully, we're going to take off and grow, but we have no predictability for sure. And then, the more you can build at one time, there's an economy of scale with construction projects. So, you don't have to throw away anything if you have to phase something, because a lot of times, if you're going to phase a project, you have to build something to kind of be a Band-Aid that later ends up getting replaced when you put the final big picture together, and when the complete project is completed. And of course, it's better just to do it right the first time. So, let's go to the, this spreadsheet, so to speak, that I handed out in January, and I just want to bring a couple of points to discussion here. I put some numbers on this thing, so we'll look at, the first thing we already talked about is that the upper portion of the spreadsheet, we have the assumptions, and those are the same ones we just talked about. If you go to number two, the, we're looking at option two now, the components of option two, the blue there has, let me see if I can point out on it, I don't know if I can show it up there with this pointer or not, but this, come, this isn't working, oh, there we go. Oh, it doesn't show it on the screen. Anyway, a consistent, actually, between both option two and option three, this blue is the bond funding that we received last year. So that is included in both options two and option three. And this has to do with the Angle Side functionality, but it's looking at our finances and the fact that, you know, this debt payment on that bond actually started last year in 2013. As you go to the right, you can see in the boxes, in 2013, we had $125,000 we had to pay in debt service payments. And then that stabilizes to 250, actually years 14 through 33. So we'll be paying on that bond until 2033, in the amount of $250,000 a year until that's paid off.
And that bond was for...
That bond was basically for construction work in the water system, which primarily is going to go to the Angle Side booster function.
Yeah, it was, our intent was to focus it on Angle Side, but the bond was actually issued for basically all of the improvements that we need.
That's a 2.9.
Actually, it's a little bit more than that in the end, wasn't it, Kathy?
The 2.9 is for the construction.
Is the water construction piece, okay.
Then if you go down to the green portion, this is really the portion of the money we're talking about today. And it's a combination of the 2.1 million dollar grant, which is the middle green there, that we would take out in the 1% to match the grant. And then there's the orange part, which is the $9 million that we would be spending in the year 2025. So you can see, as the debt payments, they don't start until you get over to 2025, but the debt payments for that are going to be roughly in the amount of $637,000 to do this $9 million worth of work. Now remember, this is the same work that we could do under current funding for this additional 5 million, but by the time you delay it until 2025, that price goes up to right around 9 million.
And this is basically the option three bubble that we looked at in the bubble map over here, those components.
So again, the assumption is you're going to build everything and just going to delay it under option two, rather than just not build it?
Right. So option two would build only, would only build, you know, the stuff under the bubble there that we talked about for option two, and we would start debt service payments on that in 2017, in the amount of $115,000 a year, and that would carry on until 2037, when those debt service payments would be complete. And then you can see at the bottom there, the annual totals are all of those three columns, I mean, rows combined. And, again, between funding options, we're talking about a range, which is the choice of the commission here, what you need to do. This particular model, the data on this sheet, was looking at a 4% rate increase as you carried on every year. So, that's option two. Then let's go down and look at option three here. The difference between option two and option three is, we don't have this, you know, two-phased part of building everything we need. Actually, you have the bond functionality, which we already talked about, which is identical between the two options, but option three really is the yellow, which is we take advantage of the 2.1 million dollars of grant, and then we take the full $6.9 million of loan money at the 1%, and that then would start debt payment services in 2017, in the amount of $380,000 a year, and would carry on until 2037. So, that really is kind of the differences between options two and three, is on option two, you have to delay things until 2025, and then you don't know exactly what interest rate, you know, you're going to have to pay out there. So, one other thing I just want to point out on this spreadsheet is, in a square box right down below the life of the loan column, which is like the fourth column over, it adds up the actual debt service payments between the two options. So option two, you have the three debt service payments that total 20,900,000...
20 million.
20,900,000, I'm sorry. And under option three, the two total up to 13,105, and the difference between those is 7.8 million dollars that you save in interest costs between options two and three to the utility. So that's money that, if you go with option three, will be money you don't spend just on interest payments. So, happy to answer any questions on that spreadsheet at any time.
Just, and I'm not trying to be silly, but if you take everything that you're talking about, about how much we can save if we spend, borrow a whole bunch more right now, if you take that into your everyday life, why aren't we all buying brand-new Lexuses at 1% interest? Because our maintenance will be almost nil for 15 years. Yeah, we owe $45,000,000, I mean, you know, but, you know, you just got to put this stuff into practical terms. All of this, none of this really talks about where this money, borrowed money has got to be paid from, and that's on a population that one-third of it is below the poverty line. I mean, you know, and those are today numbers. It's got to be balanced. You've got to take a look at our community, and the level of service that we can afford, because if you can't afford to buy the new Lexus, you can't afford to buy the new Lexus, no matter what the interest rate is, no matter how much less maintenance you're going to have to do, no matter, all of those things. And in my world, at the moment still, option two would be a compromise for me, at the moment, and, you know, we're halfway through the presentation. The logic of borrowing a bunch of money to do something because you can save money later, doesn't work in our everyday lives, or else we would be buying that kind of stuff quickly, and we don't because we can't afford it. That's just, I mean, I'm not trying to be foolish on this, but there's like two different worlds we're living in here. And when the money that we need to pay this stuff back from, we really need industry, commercial, money, we need to have some growth to really pay these kinds of bills. We have just come out of a 10-year, $56 million loan cycle, and if we do this, and if we have to do basin three, then we're up to $69,000, $67,000 in debt on a community, that one-third of it is below the poverty line. That's just where, when I talk to people, when I look at this, would I like to do it? Absolutely. Build the tanks, let's go. We'll be preparing for the future. But if the future, we're outrunning the future. Now it's just another, what do you call it, just another opinion. Okay, Dave.
Just, I think we can answer some of that, but we're going to need to work through the presentation.
Absolutely.
I don't think we can answer all, Your Honor.
Sure.
I think that, yeah, it's...
But this is the place to talk?
This is a low-income community, a lot of people are having financial troubles.
Hopefully, we're pulling out...
And, but I think, let us continue, because I think that there's at least some answers to that.
Well, and I think we, one thought that I just had, and that's a good analogy, but I think one thought, and we've touched on it already, is, there are no regulations that say, as a private citizen, you have to have this level of transportation.
Very true.
Where we do have regulations that say we have to have this level of service in our utility system.
I agree.
So that's a big piece of the why now. Again, back to the assumption, number one assumption Greg showed her, first slide in the funding piece, that we have to build everything in the comp plan, in the 20-year comp plan window.
But, another comment along with that, you know, conversely, when you use the analogy you just used with the Lexus, I mean, the reason you're buying something like that is because you don't have maintenance coming up. You're actually paying yourself forward by spending the money now, as option three presents, that if we do it now, we're saving the repairs X amount, $7.8 million down the road.
We're assuming that.
That's all I'll say.
Sure, sure. It is an assumption. Those are what we call assumptions.
Okay, so everybody's weighing in. I made a point, the analogy of the water system to a body, and we all know that preventative healthcare pays off in the long run.
Yeah, let me follow up on that. And I think this is a point that Greg, that we were intending to make, but you brought it up. So, this is, closer, this is a projection that goes out a long ways, and I think it needs to, and in fact, I'm the one that was helping to drive it out to the end. And I think, to the extent that you can identify how much you're borrowing, it's a pretty easy calculation, you just say, you know, this is going to be your mortgage payments, for instance, if you were buying a house or a car or anything. The other issues are budget numbers, if you will. They're the best guess that we can make as professionals, and they're not going to be perfect. They're, no more than your annual budget is going to get all those numbers exactly on. So what you're, what we're doing here is, we're doing our best guess as to what these costs are going to be, and, but we have to plan, and we have to do the best we can within the limits that are unavoidable. And so, and I think, and I think the point I'm trying to make here is that, if you're making an estimate for what's going to happen next year, you can get pretty good, you can make a pretty good guess. If you're making one that's out 20 years, it's more difficult. So, that's, and so, you know, we just, we're trying to, we're trying to let you know, that's the context that we're obliged to work within. And I think it may be helpful and it may not, but it is our reality.
Yeah. Sounds good. All opinions are welcome here.
I have just a quick question over information that you've gone over already. I'm wondering what the children growth rate has been for the past five years, if you know that?
I have, I don't have the numbers. We do track them, but my, it's been pretty flat, Heidi, it's been practically none. I think we're, you know, if it goes, it's going to, it's going to be over the 1% that we're projecting, I would think. If Shelton Hills starts, for instance, and we start building houses, it probably would exceed 1%. We're, it's a guess, so...
And then, for the areas that it's being served, are the citizens within those areas paying for any of the debt service?
Debt service is paid for out of rates, and so, to the extent that they become water customers, they would, they would help pay for it. To the extent that they're not customers, then they would not.
So there is a plan for the citizens in this area to hook up to the water, or...
There, in the comp plan, that is part of the growth projection, is some of the conversion, in UGA in particular, conversion of private system to the public system. So that's part of the growth projections, and there's part of the ultimate capacity analysis there as well.
And you also have system development charges as new customers hook up, there are development charges, for example, a county facility will be hooked up, a county public works facility will be hooked up to the new system, and there will be a charge to them, a buying in the city of Shelton system, other people to pay, it's your turn to pay. So you pay upfront money, and then it's supported by rates.
Right.
Can I, I've got a question. I want to go back to the sewer system and the fact of the procrastination in actually going forward with the sewer system because we weren't, we rolled through whatever, didn't want to go into debt, and then all of a sudden, we're told by the Department of Ecology, that thou shall do this, or you're shut down for growth. What's the risk of the Department of Health for growth being stopped because you don't have adequate water reserve and supply? And what does that cost you?
All good questions. Sure.
Jerry, I think we can't tell you what a state department is going to do, but, I mean, we don't comply right now, and we're getting by, but it's only a matter of time. And so, it isn't a question of if they'll tell you, you can't add that new project, or you can't, you can't grow anymore because you don't, it isn't a question of if, it's a question of when. And we can't answer that, but it's, that was, but I think that there are parallels between decisions that we've made in the past and the ones that we're facing now.
And, so if you don't make the improvements in the area, then what's your... And, so if you don't make the improvements in the area, then what's your opportunity for new connections and growth, and the system development fees to help pay for that besides current, uh, ratepayers? So, I think, the point being, I think there's a big, big risk of preparing yourself for growth. And staying in the backseat. It's time for Mason County, the City of Shelton, to get home.
We ready to move forward?
All right, well, all right. Well, um, we can get the slideshow back on, Terry. Perfect. So, um, as we look at the, you know, the debt service, we look at our growth rates, we look at all the opportunities here for, you know, slicing this thing into, into different pieces, um, no matter, and I don't wanna go back to option one, 'cause I think it's probably a choice between option, well, actually, it doesn't matter, even option one. Our, our, our water rates need to rate, need to increase in the rate of three to five percent, and we're gonna go into some more detail on that, uh, here in a little bit. But, um, the primary driver of that rate increase is operating costs. As we look at our operating costs, which, um, there's a, I guess I got rid of the pie chart, we had a pie chart before, but the operating costs are a large percentage, basically of almost seventy percent of the cost of the need for the operating cost, I mean, the need for the rate increase is operating cost. So, the three percent is really a hundred percent operating cost. And, and the, and the difference between the three percent and the five percent, uh, we'll, we'll go on here in a minute, but in the operating costs in the model, um, labor costs are at, are, are in the model going up roughly at four percent a year. Now, in, in, you know, recent years here, that hasn't been the case, but as we know from prior history, you know, there have been moments in time when that, that goes up significantly higher than four percent a year. And then benefits, of course, with the healthcare system going crazy, uh, benefits in the model are, are showing it going up roughly six percent a year. So, you know, that, I mean, that's just what the model uses to, to generate the numbers of the money we're gonna need, uh, based on operating cost trends.
And those numbers were generated based on cities' historic, what we historically have seen in the city. That's where those numbers came from for the financial modeling effort that Martin Shaw did back in two thousand nine and ten.
So, let's look at a, a graphic here, and hopefully that's seeable up there. The, the graphic shows the average monthly residential rate increase. So, this is, this is showing your rate increase from the three to the five percent. At the lower portion of the graph, this twenty-five cents is an optional savings plan that is shown in the model, is really one percent, and is suggested to save up for unknowns, whether they're capital projects or, or other things you'd need to do, maintenance and operation-wise due to emergencies or whatever. It's just kind of a kitty, a, a savings account, so to speak, for the utility, and that is totally optional, uh, whether or not you would take all or, or part of that. But that, that equates, that twenty-five percent, twenty-five cents a month is, is the amount that, that equivalent is one percent of that rate increase.
We wanna go back real quick and how we got the average, no, this is fine, but I can take a step back, how we got the average bill.
Sure.
We probably oughta do that, just so folks are clear. Basically, in our comp plan, we look at residential consumption, it's one of the calculations that, we use it to calculate that ERU, the equivalent residential unit. In our system right now, that's currently seven hundred and forty-eight cubic feet per month. Based on our existing rate structure, the two thousand thirteen rates, that equates to approximately twenty-five dollars per month. So, the average customer, based on that consumption, average consumption calculation pays twenty-five dollars a month. And so, that's where we're getting the one percent is twenty-five cents in the, this part of the presentation that we're moving into.
And how many ratepayers do we have?
We have thirty-four hundred accounts.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one hundred accounts.
Seven thousand ERUs.
Seven thousand ERUs, uh, with thirty-one hundred accounts, um, and I don't remember exactly the number of those that are classified as residential, but that, the thirty-one hundred is the total connections on the system.
And at the moment, they're paying approximately twenty-five dollars per month.
The residential, on average, those accounts are paying, on average, twenty-five dollars a month.
Okay.
Assuming that that bill is nor, statistically, a normal-type distribution, most people are paying fifty dollars or less. I think that worked out to be like ninety-nine percent of all customers pay fifty dollars or less.
Just a little caveat, that I, you don't wanna depend on me to get some of those details right. These are things that we've looked at over the past several days in order to prepare for this and, and, and another project, and, uh, and I'm gonna say that those numbers are right unless I come back and tell you otherwise, but they should be pretty close. So, I'm, I'm real confident in thirty-one hundred, I'm less confident about the seven thousand, so.
So, what I calculate here is we get income into the city water fund, approximately seven hundred and seventy-five thousand per month. That's what we collect, based upon twenty-five dollars times three thousand one hundred. And, um.
No, that, that wouldn't be right, because a portion of those three thousand one hundred are commercial governmental accounts, they pay significantly more.
The average would be thirty-five dollars per month.
No. The, we're talking about the average residential, it's a separate independent calculation. We look, in the comp plan, we look at residential consumption only, and that's where we come up with this. An ERU is seven hundred and forty-eight cubic feet per month, and we use that number to say, generally speaking, the residential accounts are gonna have an average bill based on that average consumption.
I just did a quick calculation here. Our, our two thousand thirteen annual revenue into the water fund was one point six four million, which equates to, you divide that by twelve, around a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars a month is our annual revenue. Now, that goes up and down depending on use, so summer would probably be a little higher than winter, but.
I timed my thing wrong there, okay? So, if we were looking at thirty, yeah, so, yeah, it's like a thousand bucks a month or something, but, uh, I had also here, um, around, uh, yeah, okay, so, all right, move along.
All right, very good.
I'm trying to just get, get a ground figures kinda thing for me to understand.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, as we look at this pie chart, you know, the, the tallest one on the right is representative of, of the five percent rate increase. The one on the, uh, on the left is, is really the, um, a four percent. So, and, and, and that optional twenty-five cents at the bottom is, is, is that savings plan, like I say, that, that you can go as deep into as you want. So, the range could be anywhere from three to take care of just the M and O costs that we're seeing monthly on the bill, to, um, looking at the, the two upper tiers. Now, um, the, the green one you see up there, which is the six cents per month, that's the additional amount of money that would be needed, uh, as, as part of the rate increase to take care of option two.
I think, I think a more accurate way to state the seventy-five cents is to maintain status quo rather than maintain M and O.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yep, there you go.
Good point. Okay.
It's complicated.
Please help me out. So, um, as you can see, that, that green sliver up there is, is what's needed to, to handle the option-two cost. Now, the reason for that is our current rates include already money for debt service. So, that's why that doesn't, isn't as big as you'd think. And there's actually another sheet, we'll, we'll share a little bit more in detail about that. But actually, the rate increase needed, and based on the model and based on work last night till, what, about eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
Confirming that, that, you know, six cents is all we're gonna need as part of the rate increase to allow for option two to move forward. If we go to option three, that's that purple, uh, if I'm colorblind, I think that's purple, nineteen cents up there is the additional rate increase that's needed to cover debt service payments for the additional five million dollars if we were to move into option three. So, this bar graph kinda gives you an idea on, on, you know, that, that red section are just our maintenance and operation, uh, we're, we're, we need to, to catch up there, so.
I think with that, we're onto the, the new sheet now, are we?
Could I, could I just ask one quick question here? If we borrowed seven million dollars, what would the monthly payment be? We'd have a monthly payment, wouldn't we?
I think that's back to this sheet here, it'd be one-twelve to three hundred and eighty thousand.
'Cause on my count, my little amusration book, it only goes to five percent, it doesn't come down to one percent.
We would do a, we would do an annual payment on that, Your Honor.
Annual payment.
And that's that three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, roughly.
Three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, that's what I came up with, for an annual payment.
Yep.
On a seven million dollar loan. Okay, well, I got that figure right.
You did.
Okay?
We're, we're using three eighty. I'm, I'm not sure.
Oh, I, I probably wanted to make it more than less, so. Close, we're real close, within eight thousand a year.
I, I think Kathy last night told us it was three hundred and eighty-three.
Yeah.
Eighty-seven.
Well, I was three eighty-eight.
So, you're right on the.
There you go, she told me to round it up.
But, we prepared this back in January, didn't wanna change it.
That's all right, we're, we're close, we're right on, on that one.
Okay. Um, so, I don't know, what do you think, Dave? Should we go through this now, or do you wanna continue on with what options two and three solve on the problem?
Let's, let's do the problems, and then we'll come back to the.
Come back. Is that where you wanna go?
Sure, sure.
Okay. So, um, 'cause we're, we're only a few slides here away from, from really the end of the slides. So, going back to all of those problems that we, we looked at and talked about early on, um, what I'm gonna do here is I'll go through which ones, you know, how they're solved a little bit, about, um, what option two does on that list of problem solving, and then we'll go to option three, and then we'll compare them side by side, uh, which will be a pretty easy thing to do. So, this first slide just shows option two. So, under the, under the storage and pressure-related problems we have, um, it gets us, it gets us a little ways there. You know, we're gonna build one tank up, up, uh, by the State Patrol, and, uh, we'll fix the angle side storage and pressure issues up there, but it doesn't get down into, into well one where we're building that big ground reservoir tank. And, um, so that's probably the missing piece there. So, we get, we get a little ways down the road of the storage-related problem solving. Yes, it will provide, uh, the commitment to the Washington State Patrol, will have the pressure and the storage necessary out there. It, it gets a little ways into the system operation, flexibility, reliability problems. I mean, the more you build, obviously, the more of that you take care of. It, it gets us a little ways into our ability to provide for growth and development. Uh, it really depends, again, on the area you wanna develop, because as you can see by the shaded part over here on the, on the area one, um, we're gonna be pretty solid there with, with option two. But as you, of course, move to the east here.
And to the south.
And to the south, especially on this, you know, Shelton Hills is, is reasonably low in elevation here, but as you go to the west, it, it gains in elevation. So, we're gonna need, we're gonna need, uh, you know, upper mountain views, uh, pressure to, to be available here on the, on the easterly limits of Shelton Hills. And, um, so, those things certainly, uh, you know, the more, the more you build, the more growth you're able to, to provide for. And then, public safety and risk, of course, all of these things are gonna get us a long way down the road of, of increasing, uh, our public safety and risk side, and fire flows and all that. And then, uh, under costs, the, um, you know, it, it certainly is, is dealing with, you know, four point two million dollars worth of the funding need, but as you delay those things out, especially that, that delay, that, that doesn't happen until two thousand twenty-five, uh, you're looking at trying to find nine million dollars somewhere out there to, uh, finish the, the work by the year two thousand twenty-eight. So, that's what option two does for you. Um, as you go to option three, um, it really solves all the problems, at least for right now. I mean, there, there's still more work on our, our, uh, in our water system plan of things that we'd like to do. For example, like we talked about up on Angle Side, we'd love to get a well up there. Uh, we'd love to get, I think there's actually another tank that is, is talked about in our comp plan, uh, for, um, Angle Side. But, you know, this, this gets us a really long ways home, at least for what we really need to do in the next twenty years. And, uh, so, all of those, and then as you, of course, just compare them side by side, you can see that really you hit four out of, or five out of six, uh, six out of six with option three, and, and, and only one really for, um, option two. So, um, can we, can we go back, before we get to that last slide, can you go back to the other, 'cause I, I, I wanna make an introductory remark to how far before, uh, back to the one with the blocks there.
The block.
Yeah.
What was, what was driving me crazy, has been through this whole process, is trying to sort out what's going on, because the mayor says, said, how much is it gonna cost you to borrow seven million dollars? The numbers don't, the numbers don't line up here. You're telling us that it's gonna be real cheap, and it's not, because I, and I, I've, I've had that same experience in going through this, what's going on? And what, and our issue is that what we've been doing is we've been looking at this model that we paid all this money for in, you know, two thousand nine and, and two thousand ten, and going, that just, you know, that just doesn't make sense. Yeah, it's telling us that we can do it, and yeah, the numbers all seem to line up, and they're a little out of date, but they're, but they're, they still seem to be valid. And so, we said, you know, we've got to, we've got to test this against, we've got to test this against what we've got in real numbers. So, we, we plumb the detail, we had, Kathy came and helped us last night, I know she had other things to do, anyway, she jumped in and rolled up her sleeves and, and looked at this too. And, um, and so, you got that big red block in there that's, that's assumed, that we were assuming was maintenance and operation, and it's not. About a third of it is debt service, or essentially capital, it's reserved for capital. And we've been banking some of it, and we've been spending some of it. In fact, a lot of the work that we've done in order to, to pay for consultants and such has come from those dollars that are, that are already built in. And the reason is, is because we've been adding to the rates over the years in anticipation of doing this project, or projects like this. And so, you know, you, you don't have to, um, what I think they're gonna tell you, and he's got the numbers to show it, is that you don't have to increase it all to do option two, but if you, but you only need to add, you know, nine cents or whatever that is up there, nineteen, nineteen cents to your, to your average twenty-five dollar bill per month in order to be able to do it safely and not, not have to worry that you're not gonna have enough, probably. And if you wanna do the others, you're talking about nineteen cents, and that's not what it costs, because what you're doing is you're pulling more, you're also, you're pulling the difference out of the red, and there's money in there to do it, based on what we found last night. Now, that's the concept. And now, Greg, I'm sorry if I took your thunder away from you.
No, you, but, you're a unit, Mayor Yu had called me earlier today, and he's, because you've been asking me this question.
Yeah. If you look at it from just basic, basic thirty-one hundred dollar, thirty-one hundred customers, you got twenty-five dollars a month, you wanna borrow seven million dollars for twenty years, what it kinda comes down to is a ten dollar a month increase from someplace to pay that. We need ten dollars per hookup per month to pay for the seven million dollar loan. And we have come up with only about a buck a month, seventy-five cents to a buck and a quarter. That leaves the nine dollars, and you have an answer for that. Now, you talk about a red block, and you'd have to sell me a little bit more on that one, where nine dollars a month is coming out of that reserve fund or whatever.
Well, maybe I spent, I missed, it's not out of the block, it's out of the, I mean, that's, those are just the increases we're talking about. It's actually coming out of the, um, it's actually coming out of the existing rates. Because we've all, there's, there's already money that's been programmed into our rates in order to be able to fund capital projects. So, people are paying for it right now.
So, should we go to our?
Okay.
Our new spreadsheet and kinda go through that piece, Dave? Is that the last spreadsheet I gave you, Terry? We're gonna be looking at this one at the bottom of your stack.
Gordon, you can have this one.
Yeah, I've got it, I've got a couple extras up here, too.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, to kinda echo what Dave said, I, you know, from my work with our consultants back in two thousand eight, nine, ten, and even into eleven, and my confidence in the work they'd done, reviewing that model, I knew we were getting the right answers. Kathy and I. Kathy and I had been kind of back and forth a couple times, and yeah, we got the right answers, we're, it's right, but we can't quite put our finger on why this number doesn't match up with some other things we found. And really, the question got asked again last night, and as Dave said, we spent quite a bit of time, we were here until almost 8:00, kind of as a group brainstorming through this.
Dave was leaning all over them.
Dave was leaning all over us.
And I will say, from my communications with the city administrator, this has been a major issue that him and I have talked over and over and over again. And I thanked him yesterday for spending the hours and the time trying to come up with the answer to this question, because it's the ratepayers that we are working for, and we want to make sure, whatever decision we make, that we are doing it in the best interest of them. That's what we're here for. So, go ahead, Mike.
So, and I think it kind of helped. Kathy and I were getting there, but we weren't quite there, and having a couple extra brains in the room, I think we finally got to a good solution, a good answer to the question last night. And the bottom line kind of goes back to a comment Jerry made on the sewer, where kind of we're hesitant to set ourselves up to be ready for what was, what everybody knew was coming. Many years ago, even somewhat even prior to the current comp plan, that actually occurred. Under the old rate structure, there were some rate increases in there, and then in 2010 with the comp plan, we restructured the rates and implemented the last three years of increases we've had. That whole process and that rate that's in place now anticipated a certain amount of construction going on, and it conservatively estimated all of that was going to be funded through bonds at 4.5% interest rate. And in fact, the original model that was developed in 2010 said that we were going to have $7.1 million of debt today that we were paying on, at 4.5% interest rate. So if you kind of go to the upper block here that has option two in it, you'll see about one, two, three, four lines down, so just above the gray bar that has the years in it, we've got three rows of information. And you'll see that we've got 2013 annual revenue, and that's the actuals out of our financial reports. And we've got O and M expenditures out of our financial reports. And you'll see the difference there is about a half a million dollars. That is money that was built into the rate structure to pay for debt. And so right now, today, with only the 2013 bonds, we have the ability to make debt payments of $517,000 a year, and our 2013 bonds have a payment of about $250,000. So we've got an additional capacity of about $250,000 a year to pay for debt.
Let me just get this, because it took Dave a while, and it's going to take me a little while to try and.
It took us all a while.
I'm going to, so let me just try and say it in my terms. Our existing rate to our ratepayers, we have approximately $9 a month above maintenance that we have been, is that, do we have that in the savings account?
We have a good portion of it in the savings account.
So approximately, if the increase is only going to be 75 cents to a buck and a quarter, but the payment bill for $7 million is going to be about $10 a month per hookup, approximately, approximately. That $9 a month, we have anticipating been pretty much already worked in knowing that this option, this is going to come around. But we haven't saved the $7 million.
We haven't, because there was no intent to save the $7 million. We've saved the debt service payments that we would have paid over the last two to three years, and you'll, let's go through this a little bit more.
We also, we also built some things.
Yeah, exactly.
Studies, and we've also put some other money into other capital.
Which is kind of maintenance, in a way, or building.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a straight, we didn't pay the debt, so we've got that much money. We, we did things effectively with the monies we had, and in the end, we still have, have a little bit in the bank right now. So, again, based on the rates that are there now, and an analysis of our ongoing revenue versus operational costs, we have about a half a million dollars in capacity to pay for debt on an annual basis. Option two, we'll just use that for the example, we're saying, under the option two, that we want to add six cents per the average residential, or per ERU is actually the way we look at it here, 7,000 ERUs, as Dave said, may not be the exact number, but for purposes of what we're doing, it gets us pretty close. That would say in 2014, assuming we had put all this in place in January, we would expect to bring in an additional $5,000 a year in capacity to pay debt, for a total capacity of about $525,000. We currently have debt payments of 250,000. That allows us to put a little bit more money in the bank. As we move down the load, down the road, we're still increasing that little increment, because we're saying that six cents per ERU is getting added in every year. By the time that our debt service for the new work comes into play after construction is completed, we're predicting 2017, we have a total debt service under option two of $365,000 a year. Our rates have generated a capacity to pay $537,000 a year. And so even under option two, with this very minimal piece for, and this is only the piece for debt service, for capital improvements, not to keep up with the status quo under O and M and others, we have more than enough to pay the debt service on the $2.1 million loan. If you go down to the bottom, it's, it's looking at that same analysis for the option three, and we're saying that we need the whole 25 cents for capital improvements. And again, it's basically the same calculation, except for that in 2017, our need for debt payment is approximately $630,000 a year. And we have, in that year, we only have about $600,000 in capacity. But we've saved up almost $2 million at that point that we can use to offset what we build the capacity over future years till we get to the point of balancing there. And that's what, in option three, the bottom, the cash balance, that's kind of what that's showing you, is, yeah, we've, as we go through time, assuming we go with option three and all of our variables stay in place, we built some money up until about 2016, then we use a little bit of that cash to cover shortfalls in debt payments, and then we get to a point where we start building cash again. And by the end of this 10-year window we're looking at, we've got a reserve for unknowns, additional capital expense, whatever may come our way, of about $2.5 million that we can take advantage of and not need for additional debt for in the future. So if we had a major catastrophe and a major failure, we've conceivably got some cash on hand, and this is assuming we don't do that savings plan, which would actually add to this, we have some cash on hand for those unknowns that we could run into. And so that's where the question is. We've already, as you said, Mayor, got the eight or nine dollars a month is already in the rates.
Built into the existing rate.
Exactly.
And this is the first time that I have heard that. I, you know, I know that earlier on in your presentations, you were talking in how this $1 a month could work, and I went, so, I know borrowing money, I've done it my whole life, I mean, $7 million, you know, and this is the first time that I've heard about it. So, anyway, thank you for your due diligence.
And I'll be honest with you, Mayor, it's just the work that we did as a group last night that finally solidified it, I think for all of us. I still had question myself, I was confident the answer was right because of my confidence in our consultants, but I couldn't quite put my finger on the specific reason why.
The one part of this equation, had we taken that built-in rate, $9 per household, had we not done some capital expenditures, you see, and that money had gone into a pool over a period of a number of years, we could be doing these options with money that we actually had. Because we'll still have some extra capital things, see, that's where, where if we've done this, but we don't have this money in the bank, there will still be, need money for other capital things that we're not planning for, because that's been going on since. So, so that's where, you see, unless we were going to say there is, this, this $9 is directly going towards this debt service, you understand, because we haven't done that.
That's right, but that was the intent of the original financial modeling, which developed the rates that we're currently under. And because we delayed capital, we actually saved money instead of spending it on debt.
So the actual increase per of 75 cents to a buck and a quarter per residence would only be true if that entire $9 was going towards this debt service of the $7 million You understand what I'm saying here? We haven't done that, we've taken it, and we had a capital improvement project which needed to be done.
Right.
We're saying we shouldn't have done that, but we haven't taken that amount. So if the entire $9 built into the rate system, plus the 75 cents, or $1, then was totally to the $7 million, then you're, then that works, where the effects on the rate pair are only at this point, 75 cent or $1 increase. But if we haven't been able to do that because of other capital expenses, what's to say that, okay, no more other, this is only for this debt, that only works if that full $9 goes towards this debt service? Yes?
I think you're, I think you're right, and we did talk about that last night, the, you know, how much, right now, you've got a pretty good cushion in there for surprises and other things. I don't have, we don't have an accounting, we didn't have time to develop an accounting for you as to where these dollars have gone over these past six or eight years that this has been building. I think that some of it obviously has gotten in, based on the conversation we had last night, some has gone into preparing for the plans that we've got right now, into capital planning and that sort of thing. But I think that's what that 25 cents is in there for. So if you want to, I mean, this theoretically will build us a little cushion of a couple million bucks, you know, over the next 10 or 20 years, is that enough? I worry about that, because we get surprises in these things, and that's what that other 25 cents is for. And it doesn't sound like much, and it's an additional monthly amount, but it adds up each year. And then, and then, and if you multiply it times all the accounts we have, times the whole year's worth of collections, it starts to build up millions.
And I think another piece onto what you're trying to get at, Mayor, is, we said we've spent some of that money, but actually, it's a fairly small piece. The model that was originally done in 2010.
2010.
Yep. Assume that by now, we would have $7 million of debt, and we would need to be paying this approximately $680,000 a year. It hasn't happened, we've delayed that construction. And the model, going through its process, generated about a million four, a million five in savings, with that assumption we didn't do the debt service. We're showing that we got about a million two. So we've only spent a small piece of what is built into the rates right now. And that's what this, this sheet's trying to show, that we've got that million two, and because of that, we're really able to create a cushion that probably wasn't there in the original concept.
Commissioner Olson.
On option two up there, you show out in 2024 having about 3.5 million. But that's not taking in, it's still, at that point, we still need to do $9 million worth of improvements.
That's correct.
And option three, in the same time period, 2.5 million, and we've completed.
That's correct. Yep.
One of the cities I've been talking to on how they're handling the same situation, what they chose to do, they went to the Department of Health and said, okay, we recognize that we are short in fire flow, that we need to go in this direction, here's what we're going to do, we are going to raise our rates 3% a year, we are taking that money, and we are putting it in the bank. And when we have enough to build tank number one, we're building the tank. When we have enough to do this line to here, we're going to do it at that point. They have worked out a plan with Department of Health to do it as they have the money, you know, because we all want to jump farther ahead and take, and do these things like this. So, so even though this is built into the rate, and which is good news, I mean, it's good news that we have 1.2 million, I guess, in savings, we only used about 200,000 in some capital improvement projects, this has been built in for this moment, is, we don't have to jump the full 7 million to take advantage of this benefit. I mean, option two would possibly put us into a scenario to where we could then continue to bank and build option four, hopefully, when we have something on the ground that is going to produce some income for the city. That's my main consideration here. Our population is at zero, our industrial commercial growth is at zero, and I'm just still, because no matter what happens, what's better than a low-interest loan is a zero loan, and I am still concerned about the future economic growth of this city, because we have 56 on the books, this would put us at 63, and if we don't find the grant money which we're looking for for basin three, that would push it on to 67, 69, whatever, and it just, it just goes and goes and goes. I think a $4 million-plus dollar jump in our water system is a big jump, and a good jump. And so, just, that's my ramble.
And under that scenario, though, you know, if we waited for growth before we determined to do these things, wouldn't the rate increase to the customer spike more than the 4%?
I believe it likely could. We'd have to run scenarios to be able to tell it, but yeah, that's a strong possibility.
So instead of a gradual, like, or a steady increase that you've mapped out here, we would go along for a few years, and then when growth hits, we'd have an enormous spike, similar to what happened with the sewer plan, because we delayed.
And I think to, in combination of a couple comments, comment that you made, Mike, as well as what you were just making, Mayor, you know, we show 2024, we've got about 3.5 million. We're going to increase that small increments as we go, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year through the next few years off of this table. Remember, one of the big assumptions we made early on is, based on our comp plan commitments right now, which, again, can change at the commission's discretion, but based on where we're at right now, we've said, all of this, at least options two and three, need to be built by 2028. So we're not going to save the $9 million. There's going to be some need for debt, more than what the loan amount would be, and it's likely to be loaned, and it's likely to be higher interest rate loan than what we have now. So we're looking at, you know, in the neighborhood of six or seven million dollars of loan out in 2025, 2026, to meet that goal of, we build everything by 2028.
Commissioner Olson, you made a really good point that this particular spreadsheet doesn't, doesn't cover, and that is the fact that under option two, you're going to need to spend $9 million in 2025. And the debt service payments on that are roughly $637,000 annually through 2045. And we have 3,500, or 3,500,000 here available, which 600, you know, eating at that would make that go away in probably four years. I mean, I don't think we're going to have that much in the bank, this is if we saved it all along and never spent a dime on anything else, which we, I'm sure will. So, you know, the likelihood, we're going to have to raise rates significantly out in 2025 to be able to make these debt service payments by delaying the work. You're exactly right. This sustainable 4% that we could live with, and if you wanted to go into that optional additional quarter a month to gain a little bit more reserves, in my opinion, that's good business. I mean, we have the ability to take advantage of 1% money, we don't know what the rates are going to be in 2025. I mean, we're, we put 4% as the inflation factor in there, but I, I don't know.
Along with, with the impression that at the last AWC conference. Along with, with the, the impression that at the last AWC conference thing was, was the whole capital trust fund and all that stuff is going away essentially, that the cities are going to be left on their own with maybe zero grants. Department of Commerce can jump in there a little bit, but it looks like we're going to be on our own more likely in the future for getting money.
Yeah.
Rather than, than any grants. We don't know. But that was an impression.
And that's the impression I've been hearing too from my channel.
The states, the states are just like everybody else is, so they're not, they're not apt to give away money to applicants.
And I think, going back to what the mayor said, what, your comment was very valid, that, you know, if we can save the money and build things as we have the cash to do it, that's great. I think what, what option two does to some extent, possibly, with this issue of the 2028, we got to build everything set aside. But option three definitely does is, under option three, we build the stuff that's of most immediate need, and we've got enough income to pay for the debt for it. And we're saving money to build the stuff that's left in the comp plan. And that stuff, like the Johns Prairie piece down there, that as we build the cash, we can then use that cash to pay for those improvements and be in compliance and be where we need to be with our state and federal regulators.
I think there's something, as you said, that is, unfortunately, it's incorrect. If, if you have, if you do option two, and you're doing option two with four percent increases, and we are moving forward, option two has that continual built into the rate, that nine million. So in 2025, we're not borrowing nine million because if we built in the rate as we, increases as we have, we're not starting out cold. We're doing, coming into it exactly like we're coming into option two, which is 1.2 million, and we borrowed the rest. If we continue with this built into the rates, we're not looking at nine million, we're looking at probably half that amount. Because we're saving money. It's built into the rate.
Yeah, you're, you're saying that you'd have, you'd be able to reduce the amount that you could borrow because you've set aside money to afford the cash. And I think that's true.
Well, and, and
Well, maybe, well, the set aside, I think that's, that's available is this 3.5 million.
Right.
Yeah, that's the cash balance of the fund, given the expenditures that we're showing under, under option two.
So we're not borrowing nine million, we're then borrowing six.
The cost of, the cost of the construction project is going to be nine million. Okay? If you want to, I mean, you could use part of this. But like I say, I, I think you're going to see due to a variety of things between now and 2025, that we're going to nibble away at this, at this reserve. That's why I'd almost encourage you to think about maybe that little bit of that savings amount going in there. So there is a little more reserve. But, you know, you're going to have to spend, there's, there's nine million dollars worth of work that needs to happen in 2025, that you're going to have to go find money for grant. Now, maybe you get grant, then things are all much better. But the likelihood is that you're going to have some grant loan split that, per the calculations, roughly it is about a six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar debt payment.
See, and again, not to belittle the point, but this is a, this is one issue facing the city of shelter. There are other debts and things that are going to come up that we're going to have to pay for too. My concern isn't necessarily plan option two or three. My main concern is at what point are we going to try and get some income into the town before we continue to borrow these amounts of money? It's borrowing the money that I have the issue with, not necessarily, these are both good plans. We, sure, we want this fire flow to meet current regulations for today and all this thing. But we have basin three. And then we will have, trust me, many money, many more opportunities to borrow money. And to a degree, the past few years, we've kind of held after the sewer treatment plan and the other basin, we've kind of held to that fifty-six million. And I'm just, I guess I'm just wanting to err on caution on continuing to run this debt of the city up. And that's why if there's an option two that pushes us into this direction, I just, I just don't know the future. And everything we're talking about is built upon assumptions, good assumptions. But you, at some point, we need to take a break from this continually borrowing money to prepare for a future that we haven't seen yet. That's, you know, I'm just.
Looking at, I'm kind of stuck on this one percent growth that is projected. And actually, it seems like this past year, these past few months, we have seen the trend towards more building. But we've had a couple houses in town. We have several homes completed and being built just outside of town. So if, if we're looking at that, it looks like we can predict that growth is happening. People are investing. And so I, I feel like that is a really good number, at least, and a conservative number. But I think that we will meet that if we have six new houses in the first four months of this year. So I'm, I think that's a real positive sign. And that we do need to definitely plan ahead, be ready for growth. And another thing I was thinking about is that with our reserves, we are concerned about our reserves and we want to have those reserves. But as we upgrade our water system, the potential for emergencies that would cause us to use those reserves will be diminished. Right? So
To some extent, yeah.
At what point, I mean, have you guys built in O and M to the future? I mean, is there any kind of calculation you could use?
That's the seventy-five cents piece of that pie chart. That's generally speaking, on average, both in the model and what we've actually seen with actual expenses over the last three years, it's right around that three percent range composited. Some pieces are bigger, some pieces are smaller, but it's generally averaged about three percent. So the three percent piece really is to keep the status quo on what we have and keep that in check so that we're not starting to dip into those funds, or starting to dip into the funds that are available for capital to pay for ongoing expenses.
Because in 08, we were upside down on that, weren't we? I mean, or, or that was the reason the last rate study had us increase the rates because we weren't keeping up with O and M.
There was, yeah, there was some issue there, and I don't remember exactly what it was. But that was part of the whole new rate concept and some of the things that went into that. And ultimately, the increases that we just experienced over the last three years.
The reason I ask that is, is, is the, the theory of using that 3.5 million to lower the amount we're going to borrow if we don't take option three is not realistic if we don't keep a fund balance there for projected O and M. I mean, you're projecting 10 years out. You know, we don't, is there a policy now for, like, like we have with general fund to keep a, there isn't a policy for, for any kind of a reserve?
The model and the financial analysis did take that into account. It took into account some requirements under our bonding for certain amounts. It also took into account that we wanted to maintain somewhere between 60 and 90 days of cash, O and M cash value, so that we had some flexibility for cash flow. So that's in the model. It, it doesn't show up explicitly in any particular line, but it is embedded in there. So that there, there's a little bit of flexibility there. The 1.2 million dollars that we're showing as our starting point isn't all of the actual cash that we believe is in the account from what we were seeing last night. We've pulled out some that we think really is reserved, kind of on the line of that 60 to 90 days. And so, yes, there's some assumptions in here, but there's also some conservatism that says, you know, maybe we don't have three and a half, but maybe we got two million that we could use towards capital at that 24, 2024 juncture. But again, as Greg mentioned, based on four percent construction cost inflation, now the five million dollars worth of work we could have done now is nine million, and we've got to borrow seven million dollars to get that done.
I had, I've talked about this with you before, but I'm not sure that either of my fellow commissioners here has talked about this. Now, if I'm understanding it correctly, if we do go forward with a nine million dollar loan, and the bottom falls out, and we don't see any growth or growth flattens, and we start being really concerned about that, it's my understanding that we are not bound to spend that entire money, that amount of money, and that we could curtail the projects back to just meet the qualifications of option two.
That's correct. And the, you know, kind of the extension of that is, we get really, we decide to go with option three, and we get really good bids, and total of option three comes in at, we're talking now, let's say it comes in at seven million dollars. We don't have to take that additional two million dollars.
And there's no penalty for not using that money.
And there's no penalty for that. So.
Do you have to make payments on it though?
No. It, this, this funding program basically allows us to use the money as if it was a grant until the work is complete and online. And that's when we start making our debt payments. That's why you'll see in these analysis that we don't have a debt service payment until 2017. And that's probably conservative on the early side. It could even be later than that, depending on how construction goes. So we're believing 2017 is the earliest we could have to make the debt, first debt service payment on these improvements.
Even though we have had conversations, and it is, I think one thing we do all agree on is we want to level increases to the rate pairs and make them gradual because the thirty-seven or thirty-eight percent sewer thing, you know, we're still overcoming the, that experience in the community. And, and so, you know, that's something that we, I, I would encourage, whichever plan this commission moves forward on, that we actually start those gradual three percent or whatever sooner than later, because it's much easier for the rate payers to absorb that.
And we've definitely heard that. We're actually, once we get through the discussions and get a decision here, then we're ready to move forward. We got to, I've got a placeholder for what the percent is. Once you guys tell us what you want that percent to be, then I can plug it in. And we've got a rate ordinance ready to start in the process at, at that point. So we're, we're, we're moving forward with all of the bits and pieces simultaneously to the point we can until we get this final decision from, from you folks in the next week or so. We're, we're hopeful on, so.
I guess, in my opinion, that's one of the real desirable aspects of option three is that your predictability and, and, and ability to not have rate spikes for, you know, future customers is, is there. Because in 2025, to find nine million to complete the work, boy, I don't know.
Sure. The, I think that no matter what decision you make on this, we're going to pick it up and we're going to run with it.
Oh, new, yeah, improving our system.
We'll be glad to. But I wanted to just give you my perspective on this. And some of you have heard me say this before, but this is a, this is a different place than it was in 2006. In 2006, as it was mentioned before, we were, we, we had four different residential and one residential, commercial, industrial projects that were in, in play. And, and, and it looked like what our problem was going to be is how we were going to accommodate this growth rather than how we were going to make it through the next budget cycle, you know, without losing services. But that didn't get, that isn't the, that isn't what we got to do. But even then, there was a, there was an emphasis on infrastructure deficits. And one of the great limitations that we had in terms of being able to accommodate those developments is being able to ensure that we could get water service and drainage, transportation access, and all these other kinds of things too, because, because we had so much stuff that was just fricking broken. And so, so what we got to do instead, while prices were cheap, because they had, and they have been relative historic levels, is we've, is our, our job is to build infrastructure. And I, and I think that's our perspective on this. That's, that's our attitude, is we want, you know, we want to fix stuff. We want to fix stuff that's not adequate in the ground today, and we want to fix stuff that's not adequate for, for our future, for our future growth. And I'll tell you, there's a, there's an enormous price to pay for it. What we've had to do with sewer rates has just been sad. And yet, what's your alternative? Do you, do you not fix it? Because if you don't build it, they won't come. And so what this, I, these, these, and these expenditures are, I think, an investment in our future. Whether you do one, whether you do option two or option three, it keeps us on track. And so, like I say, we will take it and we'll get the best value that we can for your expenses. And I, it's a, it's a tough choice. I know you don't necessarily all agree on it, but we, you know, we'll, we'll take what we, we'll take what you give us and we'll do it.
One thing I do want to appreciate the work that all three of you and existing staff has done in bringing, and Commissioner Moore, on her taking the lead on having this two-hour-plus conversation. There's always something new you learn in these situations. So never in my ramblings was I ever coming against the, in any sense, that somebody was trying to sell something that wasn't what they totally believed, the best picture of where we are or where we need to go. But our job is to listen to the rate payers and, and to take, take their opinion on this matter also, along with state agencies, our city policies. And so, you know, I do thank you for staying until eight o'clock last night, bringing forward better information, more, taking this extra time to educate us on how this works. And so we can make the best decision that we can. So that's where I am on that.
Is it time for statements? Is that what we're doing?
Well, I don't know. I'm about ready to go home. But what do you want to do, Dave? Is you, are you completed with this presentation? Do you have any more to add, guys?
I think that was the end of it there. We didn't put up our slide of, here's our preferred option. But we've pretty much said that it's, our preference is option three. And like Mayor, you just said, it's our belief that that's the best for the community, big picture.
Do you, do either our designer or, or our other guests have any comments?
I think, as far as I'm concerned, the case is well presented here. The only thing I would add is the, the uncertainty. And you can talk about that, too, the uncertainty of funding in the future. A couple presentations we've gone to and meetings we've gone to about the Evermount New Pressure Home Project. State funding is, is changing pretty rapidly. We have an opportunity for, for some advantageous funds right now. And that's what we've, we've heard is, yeah, you've got option two going. If you look at option, that expanding that going full. And, and you might add a little bit more about the certainty and uncertainty that we see throughout the infrastructure industry.
My name is Ann Campbell. I am an employee of the Washington State Department of Commerce. I am also a resident of Mason County. I have lived in Shelton and currently live in Union. My husband teaches at the local Shelton Athletic Club. And so not only am I here as a state employee representing various infrastructure programs, but I'm also here as a resident of the community. Remember, I have a strong desire to see that Shelton succeeds. So with that in mind, I will proffer my comments. I want to compliment the commissioners on the outstanding nature of your public works team. They are phenomenal. I have worked with them since I started working for the Public Works Board in 2007, and I have nothing but praise for them. I have also worked with them on this drinking water loan that you are currently considering, and, and they are just absolutely top-notch. I was very encouraged. are currently considering, and they are just absolutely top-notch. I was very encouraged to hear that you have participated in the AWC meetings, another top-notch organization that has just fantastic resources for votes. I deal with them on an extremely routine basis in my position, and I have nothing but praise for them as well. One thing that was not really touched on in the presentation, that I think that is also of weighty consideration, is that fire flow is a hindrance to business development. If you have inadequate fire flow in your business development areas, you can't get businesses to expand in there. And that is an ongoing argument that we have heard in local government financing for years. Fire flow and growth are not highly competitive compelling arguments when you're dealing with a competitive funding program. Public health and safety is always tantamount. So just keep in mind that this project was not awarded funding from health because of fire flow issues. It was awarded funding from health because you have public health and safety issues, and you are consolidating systems, which is what got you the grant proposal. That also saved you 1% of loan fee. If you didn't have that grant portion, you'd be paying an extra 1% on top of the interest rate. So you've saved money there as well. I also want to share with you a perspective that I didn't hear discussed, which is that the EPA, who is the federal entity that Drinking Water gets its funding from, considers 2% of median household income to be the baseline for water rates, not sewer rates and water rates and utility rates, just water rates, 2%. And I did a little research as part of coming here, and 2% of the median household income for Shelton, which is approximately 35,000 a year, is approximately 59 bucks a month. So the ratepayers are not meeting what the EPA would consider just the baseline rate for water. And the reason that I bring that up is that in order to get subsidy, which is grant, from federal programs, you either are consolidating systems, which is what you're doing here, or you have a true hardship. And hardship is generally defined by having very high rate structures for your household income. And you guys don't have that. So just keep in mind that this grant proposal with the no fee from health is not because you have high rates, because you really don't have high rates. What we've got are consolidations. And consolidations are great for everybody's public health, as well as the ability to develop a business in future. Shelton also has a very young population compared to the rest of the state, which means that we are growing, and that's encouraging. And you can't grow unless you have good, solid infrastructure. It's just not possible. They don't open a business and they go, oh, by the way, can you get better water? Can I have a better street? They come because it's already there, and they know they can be profitable. I'm really excited about Shelton's future. I've seen a bunch of businesses that have opened. I plan on doing a little shopping after this meeting, because technically...
Come on down.
...my day off.
Yeah, come on down.
But as far as, so I touched a little bit about how EPA views interest, or not interest rates, but rates for hardship and what qualifies as grant. Shelton doesn't need those right now because of how low your water rates are. I haven't looked at your sewer rates. You may qualify for grants under your sewer rates if your sewer rates are really high. I just haven't looked. The Public Works Board, we are currently running a construction loan cycle. The, I heard you mention that O would might be going away. Well, I sincerely hope it doesn't. I happen to be running that particular.
Yeah.
I really hope it's not. But as that fund manager, I can tell you that we do have money in that account. However, the legislature has seen fit to give my board, which is made up of elected officials, as well as regular citizens, a direction to charge a much higher interest rate. Our base rate is 2.55%, which is higher than it's ever been. The legislature has also directed us to send all water and sewer projects that are eligible for the state revolving fund, which is the Health Drinking Water Program, as well as Ecology Sewer Program, to those programs for review and consideration before they can come to us. Now, the Public Works Board doesn't have the Buy American requirements for steel. We don't have a 1% loan fee as part of our programs. We don't have a number of other administrative expenses that are associated with federal money, so technically, our money is cheaper. However, because we are being directed to maximize the use of federal dollars in the SRF programs, that means it's really limited to communities such as yourselves who have these needs for these water systems and sewer systems. You can't necessarily come to us first. That is the wave of the future. You guys are competing with communities that even if they are given a brand-new water system with a big bow attached to it, cannot afford to maintain it because they are so poor. We're talking about people who have median household incomes of $10,000, okay? You're competing with that. And yes...
That's in Washington State?
Yes, sir, that is in Washington State.
I think we're, I'm sorry, I think we're at 16 per cap. Are you talking to the capital household?
No, I'm talking about household income.
Household, yeah.
Yes, $10,000 household income. I've been traveling all over the state the last couple of weeks, and I've been talking to people, both in large communities and small. Large communities are facing hardships as well. The Seattle water rates are crazy. It's expensive for people to live there. You have to be making large amounts of money. As you know, we have income disparities, so trying to find a happy medium is a huge challenge. I commend you on having an incredibly intense discussion about the options that you're pursuing. But the concept of having free grant money to be dispersed, it's a great idea, but it's not sustainable. Once we give grant money away, it doesn't come back. Even a free loan is sustainable. A loan of 0% interest is sustainable because that capital comes back in. But grants are not sustainable, so they have to be held in trust for those people who are in true severe hardship cases. So holding out for grants, it's a great idea. It's a great concept, and it really resonates, you know, with me as a ratepayer. But the reality is, is that grant pool is just not anywhere near as large as it used to be. So just keep that in mind. And just as an FYI, it's a lot easier to have real-time rate increases over long periods of time than it is to go, oh, we're going to jump it up 10% this year. And having gone through the Drinking Water cycle this last fall and done the underwriting for that, there are some communities looking at close to $30 rate increases. So you're not alone in struggling with this issue. It's just kind of a fact of life. So thank you for this opportunity to talk, and thank you very much for making a conscientious decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dave, where do you want to go from here?
Well, I think that we've, I think we did what Tracy asked us to do.
Thank you for your extra work. But I just, there have been, so there's, there's been a lot of talk in the community, but I wasn't positive that everyone had the opportunity to really get the facts. And so I appreciate that.
We will be bringing to you in the, in the coming week or two, the contract with the Department of Health. Within what will, we make our presentation on that contract to you, what, the decision that we'll need is how much, how much project are we going to do? And then that will, then that will derive what kind of contract we turn back to them, and how much we commit. Have I got that right, guys? So that will be the decision point, and I would expect that to come within, within the next week or two.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.